Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, May 18th at 7:02 PM and we are in regular session tonight. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum and all members of council are present. Councilmember Crowell, I think you have an item of business.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to address ordinance 06120 prior to addressing ordinance 06020.
I second.
Councilmember Fall seconds, thank you. Okay, all in favor of modifying the agenda to read 6120 before 6020 indicate in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, and any abstentions? Okay, all right, then that motion is passed and we will review that item first. Make sure I remember when we get there. All right, the next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on May 4th, 2020. I can have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Claude Felder. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, and the motion carries. We next have communications and do we have any communications from councilmembers? Councilmember Fall.
Hi, I received a survey for a study that is being done by several universities. One in Australia, one in Austria, and one in the Netherlands. Looking at our emergency, our climate emergency draft regulations and such that we passed the resolution and stuff. Because they would like to, they've been hired by the UN to look at this, which is a fairly new tool that people are using to put in the next UN update on climate change. So, thank you.
That's great, okay. Councilmember, did anybody else have any communications? And correct, thank you, Councilmember Fall, I received the survey too, so I responded also. Okay, then we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason.
Nothing.
Auditor Hecht.
No report.
Mayor Patterson.
Just a couple of things real quick, President Nisley. Number one, the Transportation Improvement District for our region, our district, met last Friday at 1:00 PM. And the only project that came up before the Transportation Improvement District was the Stimson Avenue Project. So it was voted unanimously to move forward. Again, to let everyone know, those Transportation Improvement District grants are extremely competitive. It's a 25% match up to $250,000. So that project is moving forward with an ask for the full $250,000. Because that certainly is less than a 25% match. So that was one item to share. The other is an email that I received this afternoon, which I did forward on to all of council. The National League of Cities, the Board of Directors had an emergency meeting today. And that meeting was to discuss resolutions to go out to city and village councils across the NLC footprint in support of the fourth stimulus package monies coming down to all municipalities regardless of population. So council, you all have before you that, and hopefully that can move forward next week. So those are my only two communications.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to ordinances for the third reading. Ordinance 5620 is an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the mobility manager grant. And is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 5620.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilmember Smedley, thank you. Or seconded.
And so this is, once again, this is $7,500 annual match that we participate to help employ the mobility manager for the county. Jesse Smith, sir, does a great job educating and connecting the dots and trying to make our transportation systems work better for more.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 5720 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a water agreement with the Leax Regional Water District to release upon annexation certain property within their service area to the city of Athens. And introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 5720.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Claude Felder, thank you.
Thank you. This is one of the many types of ordinances that we will have readings about and have to pass in order for annexation to occur. This annexation is for housing development, affordable housing development over by Lurig Road. And this is dealing with certain water rights and contracts that will be released if the annexation goes all the way through. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Are there any comments or questions before we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So as previously discussed, we're going to be moving to ordinance 6120 first before we move to ordinance 60. And 6120 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, code fees established solid waste recycling and composting rates and is introduced by all members of council. And I think I'm going to ask Councilmember Crowell, as he's led us through much of this discussion, to lead us off again tonight.
Sure, thank you, President Nisley. I'm going to need some help from my esteemed colleagues for the procedural way through this ordinance. I'll explain that the reason why I asked to speak to the fees ordinance prior to the contract ordinance is that we have had many debates over the past few weeks about the different services that our service provider can provide the city of Athens. Particularly whether we have a composting, a curbside composting program. We have had a number of discussions with the code enforcement office, with the auditor's office, and with the law director to make sure that we are proceeding forward in an open and legal manner. And with all of those things in mind, we've looked specifically at the bid documents that were presented as part of the bidding process for these services in the city of Athens. Both of the bidders provided information on the alternate program of composting in the city of Athens. One of the bidders, Athens Hocking Recycling Centers, included additional information in their bid, which included a base price and then a per unit price after that base price was considered. They also included language in their bid, including quote, "HRC is both willing and able to provide curbside compost as an option for every residence in the city of Athens." So we are able to take the information from their bid documents and determine what kind of composting program we could have in the city of Athens. So if we further the discussion tonight of the types of programs, whether we support composting and whether we support it as a program for every account, residential account in the city of Athens, or if we support it as an opt-in program, as it currently is. The HRC currently provides an opt-in program, which approximately 130 to 150 local residents take advantage of. Or we could also institute an opt-out program. And the difference there would be that every residential account in the city of Athens would have the composting fee added to their monthly bill. But they could contact the billing office and request that they opt out of that program. I had a discussion with the code enforcement director today. And he indicated that that should simply work by coming to the city building with your identification and proof of your home address. And then they can get into your account online and remove that fee from your bill. So that would be the opt-out program. Obviously, the opt-in program would be doing the reverse, is if you wanted the service, then you would go to the billing office and you would request that that fee get added to your bill. So there's a number of different ways that we can think about this moving forward. We've had lots of excellent discussions, both in committee meetings as well as at regular council meetings. As everyone knows, we have received a fair amount of excellent participation from citizens. And I do find it kind of wonderful and then highlights this community that we live in is that we all know a year ago, when the bid process was declared a failure, we received a lot of input from the citizens on this process. And we are again, as we work out the details of the process, we are again receiving lots of information. So I'm very pleased to hear that citizen engagement. Now, the reason why I thought we should discuss this fee structure, the fee ordinance, prior to the contract ordinance is the contract ordinance obviously has in it that we were opening a contract with the lowest and best bidder, HRC, for refuse recycling and composting services. We need to discuss that composting portion. And it comes down to, I believe, we're all very concerned about the amount of the increases for individual accounts, especially during this time of the pandemic. And so we need to decide in the fees, and I shouldn't say decide, we need to discuss the fee structure in order to then have the following ordinance, 06020, to approve refuse recycling and composting for the bidder. It's a little bit of a chicken and an egg thing, I wrote in an email this week. And I've been wrapping my, spinning around in circles, trying to figure out the best way to do it, but it seemed to make the most sense to me. And I had a nice discussion with Member Smedley that helped me with that. So I sent out a document today. The code enforcement director was able, obviously, the 06120, the ordinance under discussion, lays out the fee increases. And as, you know, I'll lay it out here. Section 1, effective July 1st, 2020, code fees established solid waste recycling and composting rates are hereby amended to read as follows. And then it opens up chapter 1 of our code for our code fees. And it would change the current fee for an owner occupied unit from $6.50 for one container a week to $16 for one 32 gallon container a week. And for two containers, it would go from $12 to $26.50 per week. Now, where I'm going to need some assistance from Mrs. Phillips and President Nisley is in the, I think our best way forward is to have a discussion, continue to discuss this third reading of this ordinance, and then table it or amend it. I'm not going, I don't have the figures, the final figures to show the full amended ordinance tonight. But we can provide that next Monday, if we can have a special session next Monday to read and pass this ordinance. Now, do I understand that that is an option?
To make a motion to table.
So make a motion to table. Okay, so that's the proper way. I'd like to make a motion to table 061. But should we, should I continue this discussion first, Lisa, before I make the motion to table? Or should I table it and then we continue to discuss it?
I guess you could continue the discussion to get to that point that you want to make your motion to table.
Okay, thank you. And so to go back to the way the current ordinance reads, we have the rates going from 650, which also has a $3.50 recycling fee, so it's really a $10 rate to a $16 rate for one container. Code enforcement believes that we can pay our bills for the garbage fund by having the one container rate go from $10 to $14.50. And then there are a number of, all of the rates were in the presentation that I shared today. And the other, the two container rate would be going from $15.50 a month to $21 a month. Three containers from $16.50 to $24. Four containers from $17.50 to $25.50. Five containers from $18.50 to $27. So to talk about the increases for each of these, if you looked at the previous rate increases, they rose dramatically in the two container, three container, and above. And they were a $6 increase in the one container. So we've been able to reduce those increases. All the increases are under 50%, I believe all the increases are 46% or less, which is, I believe, about the best we can do right now. And those rates would be for a, an opt-in composting program. So those rates include the base amount that HRC added in their bid documents. And then individual accounts would be able to add an additional $6.33 to have that composting service in their house. If we would like to try an opt-out program, then those rates would change slightly because we are confident that with an opt-out program, we would have more people actually paying the fee and there would be more revenue in the account. So, you know, I know that there's a lot to sort of consider here. But if anyone wants to chime in on how they feel about an opt-in or an opt-out program, Member Claude Felder?
Before I really share my two cents, do you know an approximate cost for the opt-out program for people who would like to participate?
You know, I don't, we haven't sort of crunched those numbers. I'm going to guess that it's between $3.29 and $6.33.
That seems reasonable.
Well, it's going to take a guesstimate.
Hopefully it'll be closer to the $3.33 because I've got so many messages from people saying they could do this for $3 and a few cents. But one thing that I really like about what you're discussing, I mean, I still, as I've said every time this has come up, I think, I just think the timing is horrible that we are being required to raise these fees right now. I know it's going to be hard on people. It's just terrible timing that we have to renew this contract on July 1st, 2020. That being said, if we have to raise the fees, I like it that it seems like there will be a built-in incentive to encourage people to do more recycling and composting, since it will be cheaper to just have one trash can. And I like it very much that you've structured the fees this way. Because having less trash going into the landfill and more people doing recycling and composting would be much better for the environment and the climate and would make us a more sustainable city. And some people have sent me messages saying that that could make us a national leader and just might attract some more companies to come here to set up their businesses. Because a lot of people in the United States really like sustainable communities. So that I like, I guess I'm saying that I very much like kind of the built-in incentive to compost and recycling. And I hope that whatever we decide on the fees, that can remain. I personally would not be in favor of an opt-in program. I just don't think we'd have enough participants and that would raise the costs and that would further lower the number of potential participants. So I would either like it to be citywide or to have an opt-out program. I think in an opt-out program, the people who feel strongly that they don't want this compost program to be expanded, those who've lost their jobs, which sadly there are far too many of, and those who are low income can opt out. They won't have to participate. But I agree with your premise that more people will just decide to stay in the program if it's opt-out instead of opt-in. So that could keep our budget much more stable and keep the fees lower, which would encourage more people to participate. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, I think, Member Fall and then Member Smedley. Go ahead, Member Fall.
I think that when we look at some of our long-term comprehensive plan goals and sustainability goals goes towards zero waste. And that's what this thing, unfortunate timing. But it is also not necessarily unfortunate because there's going to be a climate emergency even after we come out the other side of whatever the current emergency is. So we need to look at that. I think that an opt-out program also addresses some of the concern I would have with students because they're not going to know, you know, every time they move into a new house trying to opt out or opt in, it would make sure that they would know that they could have the option of opting out or they could just have the option of not paying attention, which a lot of people, when they move into a house, you know, it's not even in their name or something. So I think that that would also help, you know, increase options for people who are renters and such. They don't have to worry about it as much. The overwhelming number of people making rational, logical arguments about composting is very refreshing in this day and age. There's a lot of passion and a lot of people have talked really and looked at this very logically and rationally. I think that we are a leader in a lot of ways and in climate emergency is one of the ways that we're leading. And this follows through on the things that we want to do for the climate emergency also. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fall. Member Smedley?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. Thanks to Director Riggs as well for his work on this. And Member Crowell, tremendous kudos to you for all the time and attention you put to this. And I also appreciate all the comments from citizens. As you all know, for me, this is not a question of whether or not we're in favor or not in favor of composting. It's whether or not we want to be imposing citywide costs at this time. I'm a supporter of composting, I participated in the pilot, I compost on my own. But COVID-19, as we all know, has had a huge impact on our economy. And I'm concerned about the people who have filed for or will file for unemployment, those who temporarily closed their businesses, those who will not be able to reopen due to the impact that this has had on their pockets. And the more recent news coming out of Ohio University with their layoffs and furloughs only increases that concern. It's important that we look out for the most vulnerable and now is not the time to impose citywide increases, however minimal. But the reality is that the contract that's presented before us will result in cost increases, even at the break even amount without citywide composting. And so the challenge that we're faced with is deciding how much of a citywide increase do we impose on our residents? And so my response to that is, at this time, as little as possible. I also understand and appreciate the environmental benefits of composting. And for this reason, on the issue of citywide composting, I am in support of finding a way to keep composting as an optional opt-in program for the city to offer and using our city resources to better educate the community on the benefits of composting and revisiting a citywide program at a later date. I do not want to impose on people already facing economic challenges the added chore of opting out of the program. On the issue of the contract itself, I am in support of the break even structure that was presented for us this evening. Thanks.
Member Grace?
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. I just want to voice my support for, I'm basically in agreement with everything Member Claude Felder already stated. I think that a citywide program would be phenomenal. But I think that an opt-out is the second best. Then if people are struggling to pay their bills, it's, or they don't want to support this citywide, they can call or stop by the city water office and ask to have that removed. They can stop in when they're paying their bill, assuming the offices are open to the public again someday. But otherwise, call in. And I think, I think that we have many residents in this community who would likely not really notice the fee. Or if they did, but are not choosing to participate, would not mind supporting it, but just as a benefit to the rest of the city. And I think that therefore they would pay even without using the service. And I think that's something that we do for so many good for society, good for our community things. Even if we ourselves don't utilize a program, we often pay, choose to pay into it to support something that we believe is the right thing to do. And I think with an opt-out program, if it truly is a barrier, then individuals can choose to not pay it. And I know that a lot of research has been done and has shown that participation in an opt-in program is much lower than participation in an opt-out program. I think I said that right. We're going to have more people paying into and participating in a program if it is an opt-out program. And I think that's our goal as a city for sustainability reasons. And so I would support the opt-out program. And I understand that makes the math harder. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nisley.
Yes, we have had a question from the public about whether or not the rate increases involve also rental units. And I noticed we have, so we do have rent increases for rental units as well as special franchise rates, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we can provide those. Anybody, we can provide a copy of the ordinance with the proposed rate increases if that person wants to write to the Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker. We can provide that. Thank you.
Member Reisner?
Yes, I think we're evolving here to a consensus. I go along with Member Smedley's statements. I like the idea that we're looking at the option of the break even. And from what I understand from your new updated figures, this break even is even more break even than the previous break even. Is that correct?
I believe, as far as the little bit of amount that it goes over.
Or goes down, yes.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Actually, it's a little less than what the actual ordinance on the table is right now, correct?
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay. And whether or not we go with the opt- Okay. And the, whether or not we go with a opt-in or opt-out uh for uh composting, the, the fact that it's, it's optional, I think is the key word. It is an option. People can pursue that option if they so choose. So we're giving the, the citizens and residents uh an option here, uh where it's not being crammed down their throat. They're not being forced. Um, they can make a choice. Now, next week when, if, if this is tabled and if we have something ready by next week uh to present, whether or not it's opt-in or opt-out will be up to whoever's authoring the, the amendment. But um I think that's the, the way to go. But I think that the important thing to me is not so much the composting, but it's actually the, the base rates and the fees for uh the, the garbage pickup. That, that's where the impact is, is the, the greatest. Um, so when you're going from $10 to 16 or 15, that's quite a jump. And uh, you know, we got to take that into consideration. Th- these are hard times.
Okay, uh, thank you. I just wanted to reply to a few things. Um, both Member Fall and Member Grace talked about the uh, uh, the residents who may not participate in the program but, but are environmentally conscious and want to do the right thing, and I believe that a composting program is the right thing. I, I believe that it is um uh showing leadership. I, I, I wholeheartedly believe in doing the research that it's very necessary for all entities to move in this direction. Athens has been a leader uh on things like this, and I am, am proud to uh be a part of this program to continue to uh have a community that supports these types of programs. Uh, but I'll, I'll also say that um for those who may be paying the fee and not knowing that they're paying the fee, I, I really want to encourage them to collect their food waste and put it out at the curbside with their trash and their recycling. Um, the greater participation, obviously, the greater impact we can have uh when it comes to keeping that uh waste out of the landfill where it is producing methane and causing environmental problems. Uh, so I would encourage the college students, uh anybody in the city of Athens to get their bucket, uh and I believe those buckets will be provided if people have not opted out of the, uh, of, out of the program. And uh um AHRC in their bid documents uh included uh the, the type of covered bucket that they will uh provide. Um, and uh it all sounds like it will be um uh very well uh organized and run. Um, collection would occur on the same day as refuse and recycling, uh collected via a five-gallon sealed bucket. Uh, if a particular household needs additional capacity, various options exist and can be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Uh, so I think the, the provider in their bid has provided the information to make this a very good program. Uh, so I do hope that we can um encourage uh everyone, even who may not realize that they are participating or paying the fee in the program, uh to utilize the service. Um, and then I also wanted to um say that uh Member Smedley pointed out that we have, the last time we looked at these fees, we were looking at a 5% over break even to, to make sure we had some money in the garbage fund. But again, hearing citizens and, and considering um all of the difficulties that uh citizens of Athens are in right now, um uh we wanted to make the fees as low as possible. So this is, the new fees that were proposed uh are the break even now, um and not that 5% over. Uh, so we tried to make the increases as low as possible, and I think that we've succeeded. Um, so I'll make a motion now. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Claude Felder, please.
I just wanted to respond to one thing that you mentioned in those most recent comments, uh, Member Crowe, and that is regarding renters, and also uh Member Fall uh discussed this as well. I have heard um in, over the past six weeks and several times just today from renters who are really excited about the possibility of composting, several of whom um either explicitly said or pretty strongly implied that they've never done this before, but they're excited about the way to, about the possibility to help the environment. And um they said it would just be so much easier for them to have a bucket to do this rather, or because they, you know, they don't have a yard if they're in a big complex, or because their landlord won't let them put a compost pile in the yard because they'll be moving away in 12 months. So um it seems like some renters really like the idea, and I just wanted to mention because I've, I've referred to it in previous meetings, there's a lot of demand out there from people who want to participate in this. So I'm glad that there seems to be a growing consensus that we should at least make it an option. And just because I've updated you on the numbers before, I would like to share that up until about 6:45 today, which was the last time I checked, I've now received 42 email messages to my city council account in favor of having a compost program, and I've received 14 against. So there are definitely strong feelings on both sides, um but there are a lot of people out there that want to participate in the composting program.
Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowe. I just wanted to address an issue that I forgot to mention earlier, but that I've seen in, in several online discussions and um also emails too. People have uh referred to um this as a, a mandatory composting program. They don't want a mandatory program. And I just want to be very clear, um whether we move forward and adopt a, a citywide composting program or an opt-out program or an opt-in program, this is, is entirely up to the individual household, whether or not they put their waste in a composting bucket and put it on the curb. Um, it, it is, it is, no one is going to be mandating that everyone must keep a compost bucket. Um, I would certainly hope that um many, many residents would want to. It's um really quite easy and um it's a good thing to do, but it, it is um not in any version um of mandatory uh participation that, that we're discussing.
Thank you. I did receive a communication uh just pointing out that um if the program is an opt-out program, um the people who really are in a stable housing situation will be able to opt out and then, and then not, not worry about it now further. Um, but people who move regularly uh every year uh would have to continue at their new residence to communicate with the billing office if they wanted to opt out. Um, I understand that that's an inconvenience. Um, I'm not sure um how much stopping by the city building is, I do it every week, um, or I used to, uh, to uh, to opt out of a, of a program, but that is a um, a good point. Uh, Member Smedley, did you want to?
Just a couple of quick things. Um, just to Member Grace, um, my understanding is when people use that term, and of course, I could be misunder, misinterpreting it, but um when, when I heard people use that word mandatory, I think they were referring to the fee. It becomes a mandatory fee. Um, but to your point, of course, even if you're paying for it, you do not have to actually compost. Of course, if you're paying for it, we certainly would want you to. Um, just the other point about, uh, I want to echo Member Reisner, option is, is a good thing, whether it's opt-in or opt-out. Um, opt-in is obviously the more honest approach because uh we are uh not um imposing a fee on people unbeknownst to them that they're participating in the program that they either would rather not or don't know anything about. Um, and I totally understand um uh the, the desire to, to opt out because of that. Um, as mentioned earlier, your participation rates are higher when it's opt out. Um, uh, so, but, but I will say I, I um, I do like options uh for this particular program at this time. Um, the, the question I had was about the $6 and change that it would go to in the optional program. Would that adjust if we find this, this overwhelming support of the program from citywide, um would that then go down? And is that, and you may not know the answer to that right now, uh, but maybe is that something we can look into? Is that $6 and change based on a certain number of participation, and if we exceed that, does it, does it change?
Uh, Member Smedley, it's a great question. Um, if, I believe the way the calculation goes is that if you remove the $25,000 from the base bid, the $6.33 is based on 1,500 uh community members participating in the program. So as the number gets larger than 1,500, the price can come down. So there will be some kind of wrangling with uh best guesses about um the number of people who will either opt in or opt out to, to, to get that price as close to, you know, breaking even as possible. Um, and I've, I've seen different figures out there. Um, uh, so I will have to get with the Code Enforcement Director to discuss specifically how some of those numbers were, were um uh came up. Um, but I believe that's the numbers 1,500 that you're asking about.
Thank you.
Member Claude Felder?
Uh, I think however we move forward, um, it will be really vital to do a lot of education to the public about how to compost, the importance of composting, how beneficial it will be to the climate and the landfill, um, if people do this, and the fact that this seems strange, but it's been mentioned in, in a surprising number of emails, the fact that if they compost, they won't have a smelly kitchen trash can anymore. Some people seem willing to participate just so that won't, you know, they can avoid that. Um, but I think education will be critical, and I'm up, I'm hopeful that the AHRC probably in conjunction with Rural Action will be willing to help with that. But in case they're not, I think we as a city should somehow um really find a way to communicate with people, and maybe one possibility would be to put messages in people's water bills. I know every once in a while, there's a message in there. I haven't seen one in a while, but from my, my understanding is that that is a pretty inexpensive way to get the word out about important city initiatives. And I would say that information about the compost program, if we do expand it um to many more people, would in fact be an important city initiative.
I agree. Mayor, Mayor Patterson?
I just have one question, since the conversation is kind of swirling around opt-in versus opt-out, and I can share with you things, I mean, the process for something like SOPEC, the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, is you've got a timeframe in which you can um opt out. Um, and so is that something that is in this as well, Member Crowe? Is there, whether it's opt-in or opt-out, is there a timeframe in which someone is required to opt in or opt out? Um, and I could imagine that on HRC's part, they need to have a better understanding as to what that cash flow is going to look like, um, as opposed to people just randomly drop, you know, opting out or randomly opting in?
That's a great question, uh, Mayor Patterson. Um, Code Enforcement Director mentioned today that he felt that we could allow people to opt in or opt out through the end of the year. Now, one thing we did not discuss when he mentioned that to me was the population that is changing all the time. Um, so certainly with this initial program, the first year and the, the regular residents of the city of Athens um would have more time than simply before July 1st to, to contact the billing office to opt out. And he was suggesting during the first six months of the program. Uh, but that's a great question going forward. How does the, the service provider calculate, you know, their costs if it's so unsure year to year? So that's definitely something to consider. Um, I'll just say that um, you know, communications with AHRC, uh, they, they have been providing this service uh to the city of Athens. Um, they have been obviously working with uh not only the mayor's office, but with Rural Action on the pilot program. Um, they uh are still actively uh looking at additional opportunities. They, uh, a member of uh Rural Action sent me an email today um about a grant program um that would, that the municipalities can apply to uh for infrastructure, and they were thinking that it would be a good uh grant for a shredder uh to be used for um compostable ware or some of the uh um product, compostable products that are not food waste, obviously. Um, so there's lots of interest, and I think that um AHRC uh would find a way uh to work with the city to, to make this work, even with the difficulties of trying to nail down um, you know, the exact numbers. That's my sense. Member Fall, is that you waving or, or you're just giving a thumbs up? Okay, um, any, any other comments? I think what we, what I'd like to do is I'd like to um um make a motion to table this ordinance. And again, uh, President Isley and uh Mrs. Watt, um, this is contingent upon agreeing to have a special session next Monday. So how do we solidify the decision to have a special session next Monday? And I, and I believe there are others on the call here who would also like a special session for other uh items?
I'll, I'll second the tabling and second the special session. How's that?
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that we need a motion for a special session, but um it, I think we can say that given the circumstances, you know, and the conversation, that it makes sense to move towards a special session next Monday night. So that's fine. So what you have right now is a motion made by Councilmember Crowe to table 6120, and that was seconded by Councilmember Fall. And is there any other discussion? Right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. All right, then the motion to uh lay on the table is approved, and we can move on now then back to 6020. And that's an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for municipal refuse, recycling, and composting introduced by all members of council.
Shall I take it, President Isley?
Yes, that would be fine for you to go ahead.
So uh here we have the ordinance, uh, and I will read through this quickly. Uh, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a written contract for municipal refuse, recycling, and composting for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, with the lowest and best bidder as advertised pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 735.05. Um, the, section two, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $1,682,692 annually from garbage fund 760-636, transaction code 300 for said purpose. So um personally, uh, the, the sense that I got from discussing the uh 06121st uh is that the uh majority of council supports uh some kind of composting program. Uh, so I would like to make a motion uh to approve 06020.
Seconded.
That was seconded by Councilmember Reisner. And so at this point, what you're doing is introducing approval of 6020 that does include the composting.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. If I'm, if I can chime in, is that okay?
Sure.
Sure. Member uh Smedley?
So I, from what I, so if I understand correctly, the way the contract's written allows us to separately determine how the program will be implemented. I mean, the options are already within the contract that would give us this flexibility to implement it how we want. Is that correct?
That is correct. I think it's very important to uh remind everyone in the public uh that we are basing this contract on the bid documents that were received, sealed uh by the city of Athens when the bid process was uh underway. Um, and the only thing that we are basing uh the contract on and the services provided are the documents themselves uh that were submitted. Member Claude Felder?
Just one question about that amount. Um, I know at one point we were considering requiring everybody to have the same kind of trash count, trash cans, and I can't remember exactly how much that would cost, but has that been subtracted now out of the total amount?
You know, Member Claude Felder, I have been so focused on the fees ordinance, um, and I didn't go back and look at this um amount and unfortunately, I'd have to um do a little research to answer that question. unfortunately, I'd have to do a little research to answer that question. Perhaps this ordinance as well needs to be tabled and we can bring that question forward next week at the special session and we can do both of these at the same time?
You can. It's been seconded. It's, the motions out there, it's been seconded. We have to dispose of it.
So you'd probably have to not approve.
They
Well, I'm not sure if you could do a not approve and then a motion to table. Law Director Eliason?
So who made the motion?
Member
The motion to adopt 06020.
All right. And then there was a second?
Yes.
All right. And in here, there are some inconsistencies, I believe. The copy of the contract I had actually had, and I think there was a comment, had an amount filled in for the composting. Is that something that other people had also? Member Crowell?
Yeah, let me, let me do a quick calculation here.
And I just saw we have received a message from Bruce Underwood and from David Riggs through our messaging. And David Riggs says the containers are not part of the base bid. They are an option.
Correct.
So I think then the contract can be approved without approving that option. Is that correct? Law Director Eliason?
It can, but I don't think that this ordinance is clear.
I believe, Law Director and Member Grace, that this ordinance, the amount that I just read, the $1,682,692 is the refuse and recycling total plus the bid for $139,000 for composting. The actual refuse and recycling bid is $1,543,691. If you add the alternate bid of $139,000 for a composting program, then you get the 1.6 million that I read in this ordinance.
Well, you have a motion and a second. And at this point, if you vote and it fails, then we'll have a new ordinance next week that has the correct amounts in it and what the intent is of council.
So I believe that I made a motion to approve this ordinance with incorrect information in it. And so I just want council to know that I have done that before we vote. I apologize.
Well, and there's also, somebody has pointed out from the public, it looks like Mr. Swank has pointed out that there's an end date of July 30 rather than June 30, 2023 in the contract. So we may want to be checking on that as well.
No, that would be correct. It runs through from July 1st till June 30th.
But this says July 30 on the contract, apparently.
Oh, okay. I thought the ordinance.
Well, the ordinance may, but the contract itself has the July 30. So yeah.
That's right. It does. I see that.
So it sounds like if we're wanting to move forward to come forward with another corrected contract next week, then what you would want to do is to vote to disapprove this motion to approve, to vote against it.
Excuse me. If Sam wants to withdraw his motion and Jeff his second, couldn't you do that?
Have we done that in the past?
Yes.
On what occasion?
If they are both willing to do that.
I don't know.
We have done that. That's true.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reisner and Crowell, would each of you indicate whether or not you're willing to withdraw your, Councilmember Reisner, would you withdraw your second?
Yes, I will.
And Councilmember Crowell, would you withdraw your motion to approve?
I would like to withdraw my motion to approve. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay. And so do we, so my last question is, do we need to
Table.
Table this then? So that's your second.
Motion to table 06020?
Second.
Okay. It looks like we have a second from Councilmember Reisner again. So we have a motion and second for tabling 6020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. All right. The motion has been tabled. With the understanding that we'll be coming back next week then with corrected in our special session with correcting these. Okay. Well, now we'll move forward with ordinances for second reading and ordinance for second reading, and that is 6520. It's an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into an Ohio Public Works Commission grant and loan agreement for the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project Number 315 and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if comments, Councilmember Crowell, you have a comment?
Yeah. No, I don't. No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on. If no other comments to the ordinances for first reading. 6620 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for small city program funds for program year 2020 and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. And we, we spoke about this, this grant application at committee meeting last week. This is for $2 million through the small cities granting, funding arm. And this would be a 5% match from the city. We're seeking $2 million to do a round, a single lane roundabout at the intersection of State Route 682 West Union and State Route 56 for the 2024 year construction year.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions? Excitement from Councilmember Fall. Okay. Ordinance 6720 is an ordinance to renew the existing city income tax of 10 hundredths of a percent, .10% per annum for a period of 10 years for street improvements and authorizing the question to be placed on the ballot for the next general election to be held on November 2nd, 2020 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. And, and this is, this is for a renewal of a funding stream that has been with the city for two decades and has helped us to, do many, many projects from the Richland Roundabout, Richland Bridge Improvement sidewalks and, and city streets, and along with some improvements to the bike way over the course of 20 years. In fact, it had started off in the, the first widening of East Street back in the early 2000s. So this is just asking council to consider putting it on the ballot so that the voters can decide whether they want to continue this, this tax.
Thank you. And Councilmember Claude Felder?
Just a minor, minor point. I don't know if it's going, if, if all these statements are going in the meetings or not, but this general election in 2020 will be on Tuesday, November 3rd, not the 2nd.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
We can get it corrected down now with typing. Any other comments? All right. Ordinance 6820 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 606820.
And we have a second from Councilmember Smidley. The reason for the
I'm sorry. The reason is that transfers money into the community center fund and we need to meet our payroll obligations this month. So we need to do this quickly.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules on ordinance 6820. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. All right. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. So we have a number of items that amend the 2020 appropriation ordinance. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. $50,000 to Athens Enhancement Fund, 250, transaction code 300. This is divided into two pieces. $35,000 as part of a local match for Bailey's Trail Grant and $15,000 for Camp Rotan Improvements. I'd like to make it known that the Enhancement Fund, which this money, these monies are coming out of, currently has a balance of about $116,000. This is a non-taxpayer based fund line. It's only available to be used for enhancement projects, economic development. It can be used outside of the city. This is monies that have been accumulating from a land lease agreement the city has had for many years, going back to the, maybe the 70s or 80s, 1970s or 1980s, for an agreement with the development down in the Station Street Apartments, I believe. And there's also for the Bailey's Trail Grant portion of this, money's also being collected by the county and through initiatives of Commissioner Schmiehl. The Camp Rotan, $15,000 is for trail maintenance. Camp Rotan is a property that we received from Rotary and we are maintaining for the city of Athens. The additional items in this ordinance, $28,300 to Community Center Phase 2 Fund, 272, transaction code 500 for replacement of the Chiller compressor, $40,000 to APR In-Tax Fund, 23, transaction code 600 for transfer, and $333,000 to Water Fund, 740, transaction code 600 for transfer and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Thank you.
And you're making a
I'd like to make a motion to approve 06820.
Okay. And a second from
Second.
From Councilmember Claude Felder. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, oh yes, Councilmember Kotzis?
President Nisley, I'll, I'll be abstaining from this, this vote.
Thank you for letting us know.
Right. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. And one abstention from Councilmember Kotzis.
Yes.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have a resolution for first reading, and this is to place the issue of renewing the existing city income tax of 10 hundredths of a percent, .10, per annum for a period of 10 years, beginning January 1, 2021, on the ballot of the next general election on November, and we will correct that to the 3rd, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. And this is just part of the process to, to allow this to be on the ballot. And so what is imperative to know here is that this is showing us exactly what the ballot language will look like. We know that we want to have, make sure that this is correct and, and it's what we wanted to read in order to, to move forward. So that is, that is the 30,000 foot view. And so I will read section two, the Board of Elections of Athens County, Ohio is hereby directed that the ballot of said election shall be in the following form. Shall the ordinance 06720 providing for a 10 hundredths percent, .1% levy on an income for a period of 10 years commencing on January 1, 2021, for the purpose of renewing an existing 10 hundredths percent, .1% levy on income for the purpose of paying for street improvements in the city of Athens be passed. And then we have for the income tax or against the income tax. And that will be the way that it will be read by the voters on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And this will be the first time of three that it is read. And any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. We now have a one, oh, Mayor Patterson. Yes, a comment?
I do. Just to follow up on Councilmember Claude Felder's statement earlier, the, the ordinance does need to reflect November 3rd as opposed to November 2nd.
Yes, I made a comment about it. Good. But as I was reading very quickly. Thank you. All right. One reading resolution, R620. A resolution protecting our elections during the COVID-19 pandemic. This is introduced by all council members. And I believe Councilmember Fall, would you like to speak to this?
Okay. We put, Jeff Reisner and I put this together because there is a lot to be discussed by the state level to ensure that our elections and our voting rights are protected in this unusual and stressful time. So I will read through. A resolution protecting our elections during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the right to free and fair elections is the foundation of our democracy, and whereas no national election has ever been delayed, postponed, or canceled for any reason, including natural disaster, epidemics, economic depression, insurrection, civil war, foreign war, and/or invasion, and whereas this COVID-19 pandemic is a significant threat to our citizens' health and safety, and whereas the Wisconsin primary resulted in more than 40 cases of COVID-19, and no one should have to risk their lives to vote, and whereas state election decisions need to be made now to ensure our election in November 2020 will be fair, safe, and accessible. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Athens. Section 1, Athens City Council urges the state legislature, Ohio State Legislature and Governor Dewine to act promptly to ensure Ohio's elections this number, this November are free, fair, and safe. Specifically, we urge the state to adopt the recommendations of the Brennan Center, how to protect the vote 2020 from the coronavirus. That's included, includes the following. Polling place modifications and preparation. Expanded early voting, a universal vote by mail option, voter registration modifications and preparation, including expanded online registration, and voter education and manipulation prevention. We urge, we further urge the Ohio State Legislature and the governor to utilize recommendations that would address problems and voting issues Ohioans have faced in normal years. Of these recommendations, we would specifically urge registration should be made here fully accessible online. This includes automatic registration when completing other state forms, licenses, et cetera. Extended registration date deadlines. There should be no voter registration purges before November 2020. Early and absentee voting, the state should expand early voting opportunities, including sending a mail-in postage paid ballot to every registered voter. Drop-off options should be included. Site design must make sure lines will not form. The state should continue sending all registered voters an absentee ballot application. The application as well as the ballot extended for returning ballots. The state should pay all poll workers hazard pay, and the legislation should ensure that adequate funding is available to all localities. And then we ask the clerk of court, clerk of council to send it to all the, the usual suspects. Thank you.
And you were making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
For approval.
I got it.
And it's seconded by Councilmember Reisner. Okay. And any comments and questions? Okay. Councilmember Claude Felder?
I would like to congratulate Members Fall and Reisner for, for I would like to congratulate Members Fall and Reisner for initiating this effort. I think it's excellent, and I want our election to be as safe for people as possible. And I very much like the idea of having the Secretary of State send ballots to every registered voter. I think we should absolutely highlight that. Thank you so much for your work on this.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Motion carries and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to announcements and other business, the first one being the reappointment to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. And Councilmember Crowe, do you have that information?
Yes, thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Ed Newman to the Environment and Sustainability Commission. Mr. Newman has been a valued member and working both at Ohio University for many years and now as the manager of the Zero Waste Program at Rural Action.
I second your motion.
Okay. We have a motion and second for the reappointment of Mr. Ed Newman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Okay. His reappointment's been approved, and we thank him. We have the auditors for April 2020 reports that council members have received. If I could have a motion for approval of these?
So moved?
Seconded.
Reports? Okay. Seconded by council... First motion made by Councilmember Reisner, seconded by Councilmember Fall to accept the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. The reports have been accepted. Likewise, we have the motion to accept the March 2020 credit card transactions that council members have received. If we could have a motion for the accepting those?
So moved.
Councilmember Fall moved. Councilmember Grace seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? Nay? Okay. Thank you. We will be having, also part of our announcements, we will be having committee meetings next week as well as the special session. And just a general announcement that I would like to make, it's more of an encouragement to citizens to be very careful during the COVID-19. We've had the announcement of another case in Athens County. We also know that it's a difficult time because students are moving back in, they're excited to be here, but we've already had a report of several of the Greek organization annexes on campus with large parties and no social distancing and a problem with that. And I know that our city police department is working hard to monitor that as best they can. And then also just a common courtesy to encourage people on the use of masks, just in deference to all of our community members. We're all part of the Athens County and city community. So just wanted to make that statement.
Wearing a mask shows that you love your community and you love your community members. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Better put than I did. Okay. Are there any other announcements? Okay. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items, and I'm very quickly checking my chat to see if there are anybody who is wanting to speak, and I'm not seeing any requests for that. So thank you very much. And thanks to the participants who were with us tonight and adding comments, and there were also some questions for the first time, too. So we've been trying to monitor those and be heedful of them and respectful of them. We're now going to enter, we're going to have a motion for entering into executive session. And I'll just very briefly explain, but before we do that, we have the motion, we have a second. I do a roll call vote, and I will call each of the council members' names to vote on that. We will leave this Zoom meeting. We will be going to a separate Zoom meeting, much as we would an executive session. When we are finished with the executive session, we will come back. All council members and other elected officials will come back to this Zoom meeting for purposes of adjourning. So just so that public is aware of that. So if I could have a motion for entering into executive session, Councilmember Grace?
Thank you. President Nisley, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for purposes of discussing collective bargaining and three matters of pending or imminent court action. And all members of council, President Nisley, Law Director Eliason, Auditor Hecht, will you be... And mayor?
One other, and that would be the Acting Service Safety Director, Tom Pyle.
Okay, he will be joining in. And you did get Mayor Hecht, then?
Also by our Acting Service Safety Director, Tom Pyle. I think that covers everything.
Okay. And I think, okay, Councilmember Fall seconded that motion, and I'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Smedley?
Aye.
Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Fall?
Aye.
Councilmember Kotzis?
Aye.
Councilmember Grace?
Aye.
And Councilmember Klaubfelder?
Aye.
Okay. So if we could take just a moment now to leave this meeting and log into the other meeting, which Ryan Schwartzoff has...